Okay, the time being approximately nine o'clock on Tuesday, December 17th. I would like to call this meeting, the Wapaka County Board, to order. Roll call.
Roll call will show we have 24 members present and two absent.
Thank you. Next, open meeting statement. This meeting and all other meetings of this board are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin statutes, so that the citizenry may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. Moving on. Next, silent meditation and so forth. Even during what should be a very happy and joyous time of the year, bad things can happen, and did happen in our state. Please join me in taking a moment in silent meditation to reflect on and pray for the families and victims of the horrible shooting in the abundant life Christian school in Madison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next agenda, before we get to the agenda, we'd like to make a change to the agenda to move up the chair's report to after item number six, approve the minutes. Supervisor Duane. Thank you. Is there a second? Supervisor Nygaard.
I move to second.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or discussion on that? Again, moving up that one item, chair's report to after minutes. Not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Now we need a motion to approve the agenda, the amended agenda. Supervisor Basquez.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second Supervisor Jaeger.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second to approve the amended agenda. Any discussions or questions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Next, we need a motion to approve the minutes on November 12th, 2024. Supervisor Jaeger.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second Supervisor Shauer.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made in second to approve the minutes on November 12th, 2024. Any discussion, questions on the minutes? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Okay, now on to the chair's report. First, would we, could we have register deeds? Mike Mazemki, please bring, come forward. As you folks know, Mike unfortunately will be leaving us. This is probably his last meeting. I just want to say on behalf of the taxpayers and residents of Wapaka County, I'd like to thank you, Mike, for your many years of dedicated service to the county, though you're leaving it in good hands with Jeremy. And then I'd like to call Representative Peterson. To the front. You will have a few words, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of times I get asked, what's the best part about being a state representative? And I'll share with you, it isn't arm wrestling bills at two in the morning down in Madison, but it's going out into public, meeting people, working with people, and recognizing people that have gone above and beyond with state citations. And it's interesting, you know, when we were researching for Mike's citation through the state, you work with someone for the last 18 years, but do you really know what and how much they really do when they're outside this building or even inside this building? So it always amazes me how much above and beyond people go, and I hope you realize a few things you didn't know about Mike today also. The state of Wisconsin citation, Michael Mazemki, whereas Michael Mazemki began his service as Wapaka County's Register of Deeds in January 2007. Prior to being elected Register of Deeds, he worked in the land title industry for 19 years and worked for six years in the public relations for the Iola Old Car Show as well as the Iola community. And whereas during his tenure in office, Michael completed many endeavors, he converted over 150,000 paper documents, including all deeds, miscellaneous documents, and final judgments to electronic images. The online records grantor-grantee index was brought back to 1963, and the tract index was brought back to 1995. And whereas Michael oversaw redacting social security numbers from historical documents. Furthermore, he was instrumental in modernizing the land records management system with West Central Indexing's RecordE software. Michael provided the latest technology and convenience for the Register of Deeds Office customers, including Property Watch, a tool designed to help monitor property for fraudulent activity. And whereas Michael served as president of the Wisconsin Register of Deeds Association for the 2012-2013 term, he also was a member on the Joint Alpha Committee and currently is on the legislative and new member committees. And whereas Michael is very active in his community, serving on the Iola Living Assistance Board, Iola Car Show Board, Secretary of Iola Lions Club, Whitetails Unlimited Board, and the Treasure of the Township of Scandinavia. And whereas Michael and his wife Brenda enjoy volunteering in their local community of Iola, they also enjoy their property in the township of Little Wolf near Manawha, part of which was recognized as a century farm. He plans to enjoy his retirement spending more time with his grandchildren, as well as partaking in hunting, fishing, camping, and traveling. Now, therefore be it resolved, the members of the Wisconsin State Legislature, on behalf of Representative Kevin Peterson and Senator Rachel Cabral-Guvara, hereby congratulate Michael Mazemki for his exemplary service as the Wapaka County Register of Deeds and his dedication to making our county special. We congratulate him and join his wife Brenda, along with the rest of his family, friends, colleagues, and the community in expressing gratitude for his past and future years of community service and enrichment. Signed, State Representative Kevin Peterson. Signed, Senator Rachel Cabral-Guvara. December 17th, 2024, State Capitol, Madison, Wisconsin.
Mike, we'd like to say a few words.
Sure. Well, it's kind of funny because when I worked for the car show one day, Kevin does a lot of work for the car show. He asked me to step out back, you wanted to talk to me about something he had on his mind. So he stepped outside and he said, hey, I'm thinking about running for office. And I kind of had this little weird look, and I said, me too. What office are you running for? And we both had a big sigh of relief. So Kevin, thank you very much. All this stuff that I've been able to do doesn't come without a lot of support from a lot of people, and the county board has been really good representing their constituents to help me get things done in Register of Deeds Office. Jeremy, I'll get you yet for this, but thank you very much. Much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to resolutions. Oh, that's right. Thank you. I just, I just want to say a few words too. Since the chair's report has been moved up, I did have a few other comments. It's been a busy month with department head evaluations, courthouse remodeling, and numerous meetings. Especially want to thank the staff and department heads again for working together on the courthouse project. As one of our consultants noted yesterday that he travels to parts of the United States, and Wapaka County stands out for him as a community that cooperates and works together to get things done. I thought very true. That's it. Now we're ready to move on to resolutions. Resolution number 30. Amendment 2024-2025, amendment to chapter number 45 of the General Code of Ordinances, Comprehensive Map.
Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors adopts an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Plan Map as originally adopted in ordinance number 45 and has been from time to time amended as follows.
So this resolution in front of us here is to amend the preferred land use map and Comprehensive Plan from agriculture to residential to facilitate a lot split. The reason is that the zoning has a density restriction that wouldn't allow it without the amendment.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number 30? Supervisor Hardy.
Move to approve.
Thank you. A second Supervisor Zog.
I second it.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on resolution number 30? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Next, resolution number 31, 2024-2025, amendment to chapter number 45 of the General Code of Ordinances, Comprehensive Map.
Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors adopts an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Plan Map as originally adopted in ordinance number 45 and has been from time to time amended as follows.
So this amendment, resolution, is to amend the preferred land use map from the Comprehensive Plan from agriculture to residential to facilitate a boundary line adjustment between two adjacent properties that has the same property owner associated with them.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or discussion? First, we would need a motion to approve resolution number 31. Supervisor Straher.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second Supervisor Basquez.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 31. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Next, we have resolution number 32, 2024-2025, amendment to chapter number 45 of the General Code of Ordinances, Comprehensive Map.
Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors adopts an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Plan Map as originally adopted in ordinance number 45 and has been from time to time amended as follows.
So this particular resolution is to amend the preferred land use map from residential to agriculture. Reason being is that there was a conditional use permit that was also associated with this, that it's only allowed within the agricultural districts.
Okay. Any, next, a resolution, motion, can't think of the word, motion to approve resolution number 32. Supervisor Hardy.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second Supervisor Zog.
I second that.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 32. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to resolution number 33, 2023-2024, donation acceptance, Wapaka County Sheriff's Office shop with a cop.
Yep. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors accepts a donation in the amount of $1,500 from next extra energy resources for the above stated purposes.
Sir, motion to approve resolution number 33. Supervisor Shauer.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second Supervisor Eisentraut.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 33. Any questions or discussions on that? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
And again, we have, unfortunately have to take these one at a time in order for the clerk to register them properly. All right, resolution number 34, 2024-2025, donation acceptance, Wapaka County Sheriff's Office, K-9 Unit.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors accepts a donation in the amount of $1,500 from Plaque Automotive, Inc., for the above stated purposes.
Thank you. Sir, motion Supervisor Muck.
Motion to approve 34.
Thank you. Second Supervisor Basquez.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 34. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Next, resolution number 35, 2024-2025, donation acceptance, Wapaka County Sheriff's, K-9 Unit.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors accepts a donation in the amount of $1,593 from Community Foundation of Central Wisconsin for the above stated purposes.
Sir, motion to approve resolution number 35. Supervisor Zog.
I'd move to approve that.
Second Supervisor, Supervisor Wangowski. Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 35. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Next, resolution number 39, 2024-2025, donation acceptance, Wapaka County Sheriff's Dive Team.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors accepts a donation in the amount of $1,200 from 81 Market for the above stated purposes.
Is there a motion to approve resolution number 39? Supervisor Basquez.
Move to approve.
Second Supervisor Eisentraut.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 39. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Next, resolution number 40, 2024-2025, donation acceptance, Wapaka County Sheriff's Dive Team.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors accepts a donation in the amount of $15,800 from 715 Harvest Fest for the above stated purposes.
Is there a motion to approve resolution number 40? Supervisor Hardy.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second Supervisor Will.
Second that.
Thank you. Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 40. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Next, motion, resolution number 42, 2024-2025, donation acceptance, nutrition program.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors accepts $2,000 from Howard Cook for the purpose of supporting the Wapaka County Senior Nutrition Program.
Is there a motion to approve resolution number 42? Supervisor Basquez.
Move to approve.
Is there a second Supervisor Zog?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 42. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Next, resolution number 43, 2024-2025, amendment to chapter number 45 of the General Code of Ordinances, Comprehensive Map.
Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors adopts an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Plan Map as originally adopted in ordinance number 45 and has been from time to time amended as follows.
So this particular resolution is seeking to amend the preferred land use map and the Comprehensive Plan from forestry to agriculture to facilitate a lot split. Reason being that the current zoning district does not allow for the right number of developed rights for the split to occur without this.
Is there a motion to approve resolution number 43? Supervisor Federwitz.
Mr. Chairman, so move.
Is there a second? Supervisor Hardy.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 43. Any questions or discussions on resolution number 43? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Next, resolution number 44, 24-2024-2025, Healthy Lakes Grant Resolution.
Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Wapaka County will meet the financial obligations necessary to fully and satisfactorily complete the project and hereby authorize and empowers the position of the county conservationists to take the following actions and to submit the following documents to the DNR for financial assistance that may be available. As listed there, also be it further resolved that respondent will comply with all local, state, and federal rules, regulations, and ordinances relating to this project and the cost-share agreement/contract.
Is there a motion to approve resolution number 44? Supervisor Basset.
So move.
Is there a second Supervisor Jaeger?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 44. Any questions or discussions on that? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Next, resolution number 45, 2024-2025, chapter 47, Conservation Eastman, Arthur and Reda Richardson.
Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors accepts a land base described above into the Wapaka County Voluntary Conservation Eastman Donation Program, and be it further resolved that the Wapaka County Land and Water Conservation Department monitored the property for compliance according to the ordinance as it may be from time to time amended.
Is there a motion to approve resolution number 45? Supervisor Hardy.
Move to approve.
Second Supervisor Way.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 45. Any questions or discussions? Supervisor Shesky, did you have a question? Very good. Okay, then let's vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Next, resolution number 46, 2024-2025, donation acceptance, Wapaka County Sheriff's Office shop with a cop.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors accepts a donation in the amount of $1,000 from Walice for Kids, Inc., for the above stated purposes.
Is there a motion to approve resolution number 46? Supervisor Eisentraut. Is there a second Supervisor Sues?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 46. Any questions or discussions? Supervisor Zog, did you have a question? Not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Thank you. Next, resolution number 47, 2024-2025, budget amendment, courthouse renovation, relocation.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the 2025 annual budget is hereby amended to allocate $180,000 of relocation expenditures to be funded from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, and be it further resolved that the Wapaka County Finance Department is authorized to make the necessary adjustments to the 2025 annual budget to reflect this amendment.
Sir, motion to approve resolution number 47? Supervisor Shauer.
I make a motion, excuse me, a motion to approve resolution number 47.
Thank you. Is there a second Supervisor Jaeger?
Vote. I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution number 47. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero.
Hopefully, we are done with resolutions. Okay, and before we move on to ordinance, I so want to thank all the contributions, donations to Wapaka County. We really do appreciate it. Helps our cause. So with that, let's move on to ordinances. We have ordinance 2024-819, amendment to chapter 34, petition number Z-015, 2024, Town of Farmington, Donald and Jean M. Harvey. Harvey, for a zone map amendment from the private recreation and forestry, PBRF District, to the Seward Residential SR District on approximately ten, ten point two-three-five acres to accommodate a proposed parcel split.
Me again. So this particular amendment is seeking to go from the PBRF District to the Seward Residential District. It is a companion to one of the resolutions we had to amend the comprehensive plan that we just heard. The reason being is that the current zoning district assigned development rights at a rate that wouldn't allow the split to happen, and there's also a maximum lot size for the existing district. So seeking to go from PBRF to Seward Residential to allow them to split this lot directly in half.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight nineteen? Supervisor Wongowski?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Supervisor Hardy?
Second that.
Motion's been paid, made, and seconded to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight nineteen. Any questions or discussions on that ordinance? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty, amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z zero sixteen, twenty twenty-four, Town of Royalton, Gary W. and Marcia A. Roon, for a zone map amendment from the agriculture and woodland transition, AWT District, to the rural residential RR District on approximately three, three point three-nine-eight acres to accommodate a boundary line adjustment.
So this one too had a companion resolution to amend the preferred land use map to facilitate this. The area highlighted is the part of the parcel that is being proposed to be changed from AWT to RR to combine it with the adjacent parcel to the west. So seeking an amendment from the AWT District to the rural residential district.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty? Please? Supervisor Nygaard?
Vote to approve.
Is there a second? Supervisor Muck?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second to approve, excuse me, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty. Any questions or discussion? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-four to zero.
Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-one, amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z zero seventeen, twenty twenty-four, Town of Royalton, Jolene and Tyler G. Nollenberg, for a zone map amendment from the rural residential RR District to the agriculture and woodland transition, AWT District on approximately twelve, twelve point one-three acres.
So also another companion to a resolution that we heard already. So they are seeking to go from the rural residential district to the agriculture and woodland transition district. This is in line with a conditional use permit for a major home occupation, which is not allowed in the rural residential district, but is in the AWT district. So again, seeking to go from rural residential to agriculture and woodland transition.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-one? Supervisor Crigger?
Move to approve.
Second, Supervisor Miller?
Like to second, please.
Motion's been made, second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-one. Any questions or discussion? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-two, amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z zero eighteen, twenty twenty-four, Town of Helvetia, Beverly and James Stoltz, for a zone map amendment from a private recreation and forestry, PVRF District, to the agriculture retention, AR District, on approximately forty acres to accommodate a proposal parcel split.
This also was a companion to one of the resolutions that was approved earlier. They're seeking to do this to split the property. The current zoning district signs development rights at a rate of one for every forty acres, so they would not be able to split the property without this amendment.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-two? Supervisor Zog?
Move to approve.
Second, Supervisor Way?
Second the motion.
Motion's been made, second to approve ordinance eight, twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-two. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-three, amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z zero nineteen, twenty twenty-four, Town of Madison, Gerald E. and Tammy Ort, for a zone map amendment from the private recreation forestry, PBRF District, to the rural residential district on approximately eight, seven point eight-two acres to accommodate a boundary line adjustment.
And that is exactly what we're doing, is trying to adjust the property lines between adjacent property owners. The current zoning district wouldn't allow a lot to be created by itself due to a maximum lot size restriction, but it does allow with the boundary line adjustment. So amending the zoning from PBRF to RR will allow them to combine it with the adjacent parcel.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-three? Supervisor Federwitz?
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Is there a second? Supervisor Hardy?
Second.
Motion's been made, second to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-three. Any questions or discussion? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-three to zero with one abstaining.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-four, amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z zero twenty, twenty twenty-four, Town of Lebanon, John and Sarah Heideman, for a zone map amendment from the public recreation forestry, PURF District, to the rural residential RR District on approximately three, three point two acres.
So this particular property is the old wayside between New London and Clintonville. It was zone perp, which is related to publicly owned facilities. They're seeking where they have, they're seeking, have sought a conditional use permit, which wouldn't be allowed in the publicly owned area for it. So they're seeking to amend it from the public recreation forestry to the rural residential district.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-four? Supervisor Zog?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second, Supervisor Bosquez?
Second.
Motion's been second made, and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-four. Any questions or discussions on that ordinance? Not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-four to zero.
And finally, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-five, amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z zero twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, Town of Farmington, Silver Mist Gardens LLC, for a zone map amendment from the rural residential district to the Hamlet H. District on approximately two, one point eight-four acres to accommodate a proposal parcel split.
Last but not least, thank you all for your patience as we went through this. I know we had a lot of agenda items today. This particular amendment seeking to go from the rural residential to Hamlet District. The Hamlet District does not have a minimum lot size associated with it, so it would allow this property to be split. I think the applicant is seeking to split it into three separate parcels. They have a duplex on each of them for it. So seeking to go from the rural residential district to the Hamlet District.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-five? Supervisor Crigger?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second, Supervisor Muck?
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight twenty-five. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-four to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to contracts. Contract with GeoSpec-
Geospatial?
Services for professional services contract agreement.
This contract is being facilitated by Jason McKeefry and the Treasures Department. It's related to our ortho imagery for our GIS mapping. We do sections of the county at various segments in time. So this, we've worked with this vendor before and have been satisfied with the product that we've received. Thanks.
Is there a motion to approve the contract? Supervisor Bosquez?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second, Supervisor Shower?
Second that motion.
Motion to be made, and second to approve this contract. Any questions or discussions? Not, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-four to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. First time I'm saying I'm happy to see you, Sheriff. After all these ordinances and resolutions. We have the sheriff's report. Sheriff Wills.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, County Board Supervisors. Merry Christmas. Again, Mike, thank you for your years of service. I think you left, where'd Jeremy go? You left, you left the county in some good hands, so we appreciate that. Thank you. So I'm gonna do my annual report. It's late in the year, I apologize for that, but that's the way it works out sometimes. So this is gonna be a twenty twenty-three annual report. And I'm in charge of the clicker today. All right. I'm gonna read you my message, because it's very important. I want to take a moment to recognize and thank the dedicated members of the Wapaka County Sheriff's Office. Their commitment to serving the community with compassion, professionalism, and integrity is truly outstanding. I also appreciate the continued support from the Law Enforcement Committee, which helps us fulfill our mission. As sheriff, I am committed to foster a strong partnership between our office and the community we serve. We will continue to focus on making Wapaka County a place where families can thrive, businesses can grow, and everyone can feel safe. Our promise is always to hold ourselves to the highest standards of service and public trust. Here we have our, our committee. We have Vice Chair Rick Erdl and Kevin Will, our chair, and Lee Muck. We all know Lee, he's a good butcher. And Cindy Hardy. The folks missing here is our, is late Dick Keppen, and we really appreciated his support through all the years he was on our committee. And well, he'll never be forgotten. And, and then we have, of course, Tom, who, Tom Johnson, who is no longer with us, but he, at this time in twenty twenty-three, was a member of our, our committee. Well, let's start off with our Communications Division. If you look, these are folks that are highly trained professionals known as telecommunicators. These folks, you gotta remember, take every call that comes at a sheriff's office. They're dealing with people who are emotional, who are very excited, and they're calling for a reason, they need the help. And these professionals are there for them. They have to deal with twelve different radio channels. They got six screens, if anyone's ever seen that. In our new comm center, there's six screens they gotta monitor, as well as answer the phones, nine-one-one calls, and then deal with the emergency situations where they have to dispatch. Another thing to note is our professional communicators, they actually answer the calls within four seconds. State standards, ten. So we're well above that. We appreciate that. So next slide is, here's who we dispatch for. Fourteen fire departments, five ambulance services, the Wapaka Jail, Department of Natural Resources, nine law enforcement agencies, seven emergency medical first responders, Wapaka County Highway Department, Wisconsin State Patrol, and our public utilities. And then below that is a little graph of our nine-one-one calls. We have nine, I'm sorry, seven hundred and fifty-eight missed dials for nine-one-one, but these are still calls that we have to answer. And we have thirty-two hundred, over thirty-two hundred missed hangups. Now our officers don't respond to everyone, it's situational. Dispatches will automatically check the area, see if this is a situation where you've been there before. Is it a situation where they're calling from a, a campground, where there's a pile of people around? They're, they're gonna probably get more calls if this really is a situation. In, in a store, it could be anywhere that's public. We're gonna rely on more calls instead of sending an officer. Of course, they're, they question these people once they get ahold of them, but a lot of times, they call back and they don't answer. So it's usually kids playing with the phones. It could be as, as little as sticking your phone now in these chairs with their little beverage holders, and it sets off the nine-one-one call. Radio transmissions, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand radio transmissions in twenty twenty-three. Phone calls, over a hundred and four thousand. These folks are working hard. Now, a lot of these calls, of course, are from the sheriff, for the sheriff's office to respond, but Wapaka City, for example, takes about eight thousand of those calls. Then two thousand one, and now two thousand twenty-three, our new dispatch center. And in our new dispatch center, we have what we call Next Generation nine-one-one. What that does is it allows us to actually have a better direction of where someone's calling from. There's an X-Y, and then there's Z. Z will actually give us a level. If someone's calling nine-one-one, it could be right at a third floor, and that'll pinpoint it, which is very important. Could be a basement as well. But another thing that Next Generation has brought to us is the ability to text. You can text your phone if you're in a situation where you can't get ahold of somebody, or you're in an area where you're unsafe, you can text that, and it'll go through. Also, the ability to text a picture to certain cell phone providers. I know AT&amp;T is one that will allow that. Dispatches all get that picture, and they can determine what's going on. So that is something that we actually have a grant, or we received a grant to install that. I think we had to come up with twenty percent. Next is our Patrol Division. These are the guys you see on the road. These guys do a lot. The, the sheriff's office is broken down into, in a lot of facets. I mean, we have the field training program, K-9 handlers, community service, we have negotiators, we have experts in drugs, civil process, human, humane officers, drone operators, special weapons, and tactical SWAT team, emergency vehicle operation instructors, defensive tactic instructors, firearm instructors and taser instructors, vehicle contact instructors, professional communications instructors, and tactical instructors, as well as the dive team members. Now, with this, we're able to do a lot of in-house training, which takes away from travel and hotels. Next is our, in the Patrol Division is our K-9, and we have our three, three dogs up there in twenty twenty-three, Cuda Nova, and of course, Dom. They, they're an asset to the sheriff's office, providing assistance to the officers during traffic stops. Here's some deployments, apprehensions, school sniffs tracking, drug arrests, demonstrations, and building searches. And I think you guys, they all have a copy of this, so you guys can look at that on your own, and if you have any questions, ever, give me a call. Unfortunately, we lost one of our Canines, Nova, on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. We had a memorial for, for- Nova, on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, we had a memorial for, for Nova, who died unexpectedly from a tumor that ruptured and cancer took over. So he's since been replaced, and I'll let you know about that in 2024. Annual. We also have our recreational division, which is UTV ATV Patrol, snowmobile patrol, and water patrol. Now, these, for the folks that haven't been on the county board before, these are a sign-up every year. We make an agreement with the DNR to work these programs. However, we are required to work X amount of hours and write so many citations, the warnings. That's where we get our reimbursement from. And typically, it's been around seventy-five percent return. We also have our transport unit. You know, we put on about a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand miles transporting prisoners. That's a huge expense, not only in fuel and officer's time, also in vehicles. They don't last long. We had four-hundred-and-sixty-five transports completed, and we have civil process. We also, if you see that picture, we had, uh, a lot of our transport officers were tied up in this court TV with this, uh, historical homicide that occurred in Wapaka. We also have our FTO program. It's a fourteen-word program. The officers learn every aspect of the sheriff's office, what to do, not what not to do. Here's some stats on crashes. Believe it or not, the crash factors are sixty-five and older, were the highest for 2023. OWI arrests were up, two-hundred-and-seventy-four. Traffic stops in 2023, over fifty-nine-hundred. And then we also do school patrols. That's not only just driving through the parking lot, that's monitoring the parking lot, making walk-throughs of schools when possible. And if you guys, if, if you folks are looking through, and you see it's a little lessish this last year, that's because we were short-staffed and the officers were tied up, but they did the most effort they could. We got fourteen-hundred, thirty-seven extra patrols in schools. Now, we have our detective division. It's made up of six detectives, one captain, and one property manager. She takes care of all of our evidence, in and out, maintains the, uh, um, the flow of expired evidence, and keeps the place really neat and tidy. Detective Division in 2023, the highest was in the orange, which were sex offenses. Next was child abuse in yellow, green fraud, thefts, burglaries, and on. I mean, it's, these sex offenses are huge in Wapaka County, and we get a lot of walk-ins. Also, we have the Internet Crimes Against Children, Forensics Detective. He works really hard, hard in cyber tips. Let's see, we received eight cases last, in 2023, uh, and additional two self-reports. Also, the forensics, uh, download phones using Celebrate, computers, and anything to do with analytics as far as computers go. It's really a good program, and it's, it's, uh, we got one officer that's really good at it, and we appreciate that. Next is our drug unit. If you wanna look at, like, the substance seized, these are, these guys, they seized fifteen, over fifteen pounds of marijuana. I mean, doesn't seem like a lot, but it is, right out. And you see these grams, everything's in grams, but if you, if you take, like, uh, meth, two-hundred-and-eleven grams, there's only, like, I think point-five or point-four, it's, it's not a lot, but it is. It's enough that we have enough overdoses that kill a lot of people. Not so much meth, but the fentanyl and the heroin. According to my drug officers, there's no such thing right now as fentanyl. I'm sorry, heroin. It's all fentanyl that they're putting in here because it's cheap. It's all coming, the components are coming from China to Mexico, from Mexico up to here. Next, we have our Corrections Division. These folks care in custody of everyone that walks through there. When they walk through, they're ready to serve their time. They're treating it with respect. And I gotta tell you, in talking to some of these inmates, and we just had the Corrections, um, state go through, people really enjoy staying in Wapaka County. They appreciate that we treat them with respect, we feed them well, and we take care of all their needs. Some of our specialized equipment is the training that they do, as well as our, our body scanner, keeps a lot of our drugs out and contraband, and it works really well. I mean, and that again was during the COVID time that we had that, and it was paid for mostly by our, our funds that were received. Some of our programs for our inmates, Fox Valley GED's program, religion, seven days a week with Bible studies. AODA, and our local library is really good to us, bringing us material for the folks. Inmate demographics. Typically, our age group is around thirty to thirty-nine. Mostly males, and mostly white. These are the fees we take in as a result of housing these inmates. Our biggest ones are Portage County and Wood County Safe Keepers. We're gonna lose our Safe Keepers, seventy-five of them, from Wood County, they built a new jail. However, we have Marathon County and Brown County that wanna bring in inmates to help subsidize our loss. And what we did was, we had four corrections officers that we did not fill. So we just, to, to make up that almost a million dollars, we didn't fill those positions. Our records division is the girls up front. They take care of all the records, take care of all the open, um, records requests. They take care of officers' reports and anything clerical, and, and they really do a fantastic job. We appreciate them. And you'll see all this, so if you have any questions on it, all of this is the total amount of calls that we receive. Here we have our SWAT truck, known as the AMRAP. SWAT consists of twenty members from each, well, we have police departments out in London, City Marion, State Patrol, Clintonville, Iowa, and Wapaka. Next is our dive team. This is new. This was in 2022, we developed it, and within one year, we had ninety thousand dollars to get everyone trained that was interested in the dive team. You gotta remember, we have over two hundred lakes, and I think around seventy-six or seventy-nine rivers and streams. And these folks are ready to go. And it took about a year and a half, and we're up to par with about twelve, twelve members, six divers, six row handlers. Next is our specialized drone team. That's four drone pilots who can fly at night. The drone on the right there, the big one, thermal imaging, as well as thirty Zoom and a speaker. It can actually assist us in a lot of apprehension of criminals who run from vehicles in the cornfields, and anyone that's lost. Another unit is our honor garden. You folks have seen these people come in every year for memorials for Police Officer Week. And we have crisis negotiators. We have four of those who are called out with the SWAT team when we have an incident where there's an individual who is in their home and will knock them out. And they're phenomenal, they're trained well. Here's our community engagement. Now, this is where the community gets to know us as people, and not, not law enforcement officers with a badge and a book, and a book of laws. And I'm telling you, this one here is the lights of Christmas. Put on by Q ninety FM radio, it's a religious channel. They get all the departments in the whole state together, and I think it's around seventy now that are involved. They work at Culvers for a day. We, we, uh, work at the Culvers here in Wapaka, as well as Clintonville, help them out. And Festival Foods does broad fries, but the money that is, is, um, raised by is gift cards. I think this year, Wapaka County had over two thousand dollars in gift cards that we can give to people. They're usually from Festival Foods, Walmart, McDonald's, and of course, Culvers, and QuickTrip. And then we have our Meet the Fleet. This is a function we do, I think we've been doing it for five years or four years. Every type of vehicle that is here in this county is at, that, at, that, uh, Meet the Fleet. And we bring all of our equipment, Casey brings a lot of his equipment. We have Theta Star Fly-In. It's just a great event for all the people in the county, and it's well-received and well-attended. Last year, we had the car show, and we actually ran out of food, there were so many people. And this year, Shop with the Cop, we do that every year. We do about forty kids, they appreciate it. I just read a note that Bill Zeimer, one of our sergeants, had been given by a, a young man that said, uh, we, you know, I'd never met, met Bill before, but it said, we really, it was like two pages. So I'm just gonna give you the, the gist of it. "We really appreciate you taking me shopping, I promise to be very good." "Thank you for letting me buy presents for my mom and my dad and my brothers and sisters." And it was really, really well-written for a young man. So, and Bill said he was a good kid. I'm gonna go back. Donations. Well-put, Chair Dave. The community is, we have a great community for all, for our donations. I mean, for canine, we took in over forty-two thousand fish in 2023. Took in over thirty-four thousand for the dive team, and seventy-five hundred dollars for our Shop with the Cop. Our community is, is just fantastic. I think we have one of the best communities for giving, so we appreciate that. Next is some retirements. We had Lisa Whelan, serves in two thousand, one of our communicated, um, uh, from dispatch, Patrol Sergeant Clint Tabava, Julie Tabava, the captain, John Zawinski, Sue Hopson, John Hopson, and Craig Copes. All retirements in 2023. And promotions. We had Nick Trager, is now the captain of detectives, Stephanie Pedersen, detective sergeant, Graham Barden, patrol sergeant, Mitch Butterbrot, detective division and drug unit, Steve Kincaid, and Jason Quasen, detective sergeants. New employees, it's a big list, so go ahead and look at it, get familiar with these faces. Next year, I think we're gonna have a bigger list. And we do, uh, lifesaving awards. Here's one that we did, and I think you all remember that. It's about the lady that was in her car, and dispatch was wise enough to get the officers to kick the door in, and, because we had been there before. And they, they were able to bring her back. And then we had some milestones, you can go ahead and look at those on your own. So if there's any questions at all, I went through it too fast, sorry, but, uh...
Okay, any questions for Sheriff Wills? If not, thank you very much, Sheriff.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope everybody gets the gifts they want. Well, you can send gifts, aren't we? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, onward to Vice Chair Monthly Report.
Lots of parts today. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, and, uh, looking forward to a good year next year.
Very good. Thank you. Then appointments. I'd like to reappoint, uh, Mike Hart Ankins, Clintonville, and Diane Forsythe, Wapaka, to the Owls Board of Trustees for a three-year term, beginning January first, twenty-twenty-five. Motion to that effect, Supervisor Berset.
So move.
Is there a second for the reappointment? Supervisor, Supervisor Jaeger?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, second it for the reappointment of Mike Ankins and Diane Forsaith, Forsythe?
I'm gonna watch that.
To the Owls Board of Trustees. Any questions or discussions? If not, please vote.
Ellen, do you wanna, can you, if you can assist them? Judy and Scott. Or I could do a, a voice vote, if you guys don't mind. Supervisor Prashatsky, how do you vote? Supervisor Seuss, how do you vote? Okay, last chance to vote. That carries twenty-three to zero. Sorry about that, guys, I'm not sure.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, on to announcements and correspondence. You have your packet update on the county-issued iPads. Lila, you wanna bring us?
Yeah. Okay, IT, the place we love to hate. When we had the interruption of, um, service, we took back all the iPads, and we were gonna have people use their personal email, and we found out that that's gonna be a big problem if there's ever an open records request, because you are going to be required to provide all the open records. The IT department cannot help you. So after reviewing it, we had an IT meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago, and we voted unanimously to bring those iPads back. Um, you will have to change your email, um, password every ninety days. We're in here at least once a month, so you've gotta wanna do it in about sixty days, instead of ninety days waiting for the last minute, um, because that'll be more work for you if it actually expires without changing the password. Now, for some of you who really, really hate your iPad, um, there are directions that you can use your home computer to get into the county email, but you're gonna have to use the county email, you can't use your own email. If you decide against taking this advice and use your email, you just have to know that if there's ever an open request, you have to provide all the emails that were associated with the county, and the IT department cannot help you. So with that being said, um, there's a few of us that got their iPads back. Uh, there's a little hiccup in it, but I think with the next update, that'll probably go through. So in January, uh, we'd like you to start stopping by the IT department and picking up your iPads. Uh, they will give you directions on how to set it up, and they will also give you to help whenever you want to update the password. So I just, anyone have any questions about any of that stuff? Wow, you're making it way too easy for me. Excellent. So anyways, next year, you have till next year, and then start picking up your iPads again, or talk to Brent and his staff, and they will show you how to get to the county email through your, through your personal desktop. But we are going to be going back to the county emails. All right.
Thank you Supervisor Shower. I wanna mention that I'm probably one of the most persistent proponents to use my own computer. I do everything at home, on my desktop computer, church, school, county, et cetera. Uh, but when I got my iPad back, they told me I had twelve-hundred unanswered emails. Uh, but when I got my iPad back, they told me I had twelve hundred unanswered emails that had come to me on my iPad. People were questioning me and calling me, saying, Morak, why don't you respond and so forth? And, um, so anxious to get it back and working. So thank you, Supervisor Shauer. All right, um, in your packet, you also have Human Resource Highlights Newsletter, the twenty twenty-five paper of the year, Clintonville Tribune Gazette, uh, the twenty twenty-five, uh, calendar. A few words I wanna add before we adjourn and to the pitchers, the group pitcher. I'll remind some folks, myself included, that there are only six more days of shopping until Christmas. Although I maintain that's what Jan, uh, December twenty-fourth is for. To you married men, make sure you get your wife, or you can get your wife expensive jewelry, or expensive purse, or perfume, or for Christmas. But I can tell you from personal experience, she will never forget the Christmas you got her new mop. So never forget. Anyway, finally, I wanna wish you and your families a very Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. And now, uh, motion to adjourn. Supervisor Jaeger?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned, and again, we're gonna take a group pitcher.
Yeah, I think, um, typically what we do is we come up here. Um, we might have to have a few people stand up here as well, but we'll gather up here. We have the beautiful flag behind us.